Let's call it five fifteen, uh, call meeting order. Any additions, changes, deletions of the um, agenda is presented? The only thing I want to add is that somewhere in there um, under the reports, if I could just talk a bit about the um, county cha- uh, county commissioners meeting of the fourteenth of October. And then I also want to touch on briefly, very briefly, the uh, interview process, yes sir.
Okay.
So, can I get approval for that with the two changes?
I'm going to approve the agenda with the two additions.
Any public comments? Don't see any.
Nope.
Alright.
Ron shaking his head, no.
Conflicts and potential conflicts of interest, not anything you see on the uh, agenda? And then I want to mention one thing, I talked to Will yesterday, about the conflict of interest being in the bylaws. He said that because we're on a county commission, even though we're volunteers, because we're on a county commission, we have to follow the county rules and the county has it in their bylaws about um, conflict of interest. So, there, I, I still have it because I asked him yesterday, what's the process for making a change in our bylaws? Because I know in, I know in my world, it was a little, not easy, okay? And so I wanted to make sure, you know, to do that. So he said, he said, he would give me the information, if you guys still want to change the bylaws, but he said, we are currently county, uh, volunteers and so we have to follow those, the rules anyway.
Well, the, and my, my whole thing about that was, it wasn't changing anything, it was like a reminder to the board. I mean, you have new board members come in and, we don't always know what's,
Yeah.
what the, the rules are. So this all of a sudden brought that to my mind. And I just, you know, we just need to be reminded that we have to, be careful not to have a conflict.
And the other part of that is too, is that we may not personally think it's a conflict of interest, but you have to look at it from somebody on the outside looking at it. Okay, if, if somebody on the outside would look at something and say, why were they involved on this? You know, it's, it's too, there's too, it's too, too close to their own personal thing. Then you have to look at it now. Okay?
Yeah, but you also have to consider, we live in a very small town.
True.
Like, I mean, just looking at meeting room fees, do I use these meeting rooms for a variety of reasons from several different roles that I represent personally? And in my community, and so like, I'm looking at meeting room fees like, I don't want that for a lot of reasons. I don't even know what that means yet, but. Well, I, is that a conflict of interest for me? But in this community, we all wear so many hats. I don't.
That's true.
I'd like, I'd like to look at the.
I don't think that's what we're talking about. I think we're talking about in the future, uh, saying that a grant pops up and it's, it's hitting uh, on a business, it's owned by a board member or her family. Um, then we need to be mindful of that conflict of interest as you just said. People looking in.
Yeah.
Why are we, why aren't we doing what we're doing? That's all I'm, I'm saying. I just want a reminder. Perhaps, I don't think it's, it shouldn't, that it shouldn't play into the meeting rooms at all.
No, it shouldn't.
This and why I'm being accused of a conflict.
Having a discussion on the conflict of interest subject. And it's not, it's not.
Directing at anybody.
No.
It just came up, no, it came up last meeting. You know, about the, about adding it to our bylaws. And I talked to Will yesterday about it. And Will said that we have to follow his volunteers for the county, we have to follow the county bylaws, which are in their bylaws. So I don't know if it was necessary to put it in ours or not. The other thing is too, is that if, if, e- even if you have a um, a conflict of interest, that doesn't preclude you from being involved in the discussion. It just may preclude you from voting on it. I mean, you could, so you, you represent a bunch of different ones and you're, you're not, just for sake of what argument, you're not in favor of fees at all here, okay? You can, you can do that all day and all night. But when it comes time to voting, you may want to consider, you know, whether or not you should or not. Um, but yeah, I, I mean, it, it just comes down to, look at it from a standpoint, if somebody on the outside was looking in, what would they say? That, that's the best way. And in, and in this case, your example, I don't think they, I don't think that that would be.
Well, I don't see the policy, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So anyway, the other thing is, and you mentioned it, Sandy, is that when I talked to Willie yesterday, he was telling me that they're, they're looking at different training for the volunteers in the county. So you said he'd try and get it to me, so that we could, we could have the opportunity to go online and take some classes and stuff, so that we have a better idea of what our responsibilities are. Because I agree with you. Yeah, we get the book and we get the manual when, when we're first added to the bo- uh, the board. But, you know, I mean, it, it, it's ongoing.
I do have, I do have videos that the board can watch and that should have been in the packet. Yeah, it was, it wa- well, it was when April was still here. She had all the trustees watch. Oh, you were, okay, that's good, okay.
That I know of, you know.
Okay, well, I can get you those.
Um, have you experienced any of these conflicts of interest in the past? And if so, can you give us a general idea of what the problem was? Not specific names or anything, but in your experience, you've been here for a while.
Yeah, I have not so far.
Never?
No.
Can you see any situations where something might com- uh, come up with a conflict of interest? Like, you know, somebody says, I own a business, so I'm doing blah, 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 blah. So I can get a gent-
Funny, we don't vote on sending or budgeting. I think it would be pretty challenging for our board to have a financial conflict of interest. Are we making a motion on meeting room fees? Is that what I looked into?
No, we're, no.
Mark, an example of that was, one of the boards I, one of the boards I worked with in the working world was, we had a guy who was on the board, he was a consultant. His, his business put a proposal into the credit union, oh, okay, okay. He had to recuse himself from voting. He could bring, he could present as an outside vendor, you know, but that was as much as he could do. You know, so, and, and those are the kind of things. And again, I don't know if we've ever come up with something like that. But it's just, you know, we have to be, we have to be aware.
Mindful.
Yeah, mindful. Anyway. Yeah, somewhere in my.
Some information from A O A dot org and then from United Library.
We'll, we'll get that.
I don't remember how we got an account set up.
You might have used our login. Or I'll have to look, I'll have to click on the link and see what it says.
Videos just at home or just here in the meetings? Because I don't watch them in meetings.
A little bit of both, I bet. I started since I was, I read the whole packet and started watching videos and then we were watching here, so then I stopped. I was watching them at home.
Yeah, that's what Will, Will said, that something, he wanted to try and get us something we could do on our, on our. Um, let's see, so no public comments. How about um, uh, number three, the consent agenda? Um, we already did that. How about the minutes from the October ninth meeting? Any changes, additions, deletions? If not, I need a motion to.
We did need to change our guest. He is not Ron Jackson, he's Ron Ward. We had his name wrong in here. And we have you on there twice with the wrong name, so. It's Ron Ward and we need to correct that on the minutes.
Okay. So, and to get an approval for the minutes with the change, you Ron Morden said Ron Jackson. All favor? Alright, any opposed? No. You know, when you fill out applications, now you're gonna have to put down an alias. Amy, reports.
Hi, the director report. Our facility, we got our building pressure washed today. Top to bottom, that clock tower got pressure washed, never been cleaned as long as I've been here. And it looks great. I don't know if anybody noticed, there's no cobwebs, it just looks beautiful. It works, yes. Yeah, we fixed that a couple of years ago. Um, but no, it looks beautiful. So we were thankful that we got it, our building, pretty. Um, and we also, I don't know if I mentioned this last month, finished the first phase of the sidewalk project. And so the next phase will start in the spring. Um, staff, we've been busy with outreach and in-person programs. We've had lots of new patrons come in. So we've done a lot of cards this past month. Um, interviews for a new director happened to, yesterday.
Yeah, and prior to that too.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll cover that in a minute.
Okay. Um, and I've also been in, I've contacted the road department about the bookmobile and storing it for the winter. Um, I haven't heard back yet, but in the past, when we had it before, we were able to park it in their lot up there on Main. Um, so I'm hoping that will happen. And facilities said they could get it running for us. They jumpstart it or whatever they needed to do to get, to get it running to go up there.
I, I would caution, jumpstart it.
Okay. You want to tow it up there?
Not start it here and it gets up there and then there's a story, what are you gonna do? Exactly. They do have portable chargers.
I don't know if it would that. So Schwabs tried to come and do that last year and they couldn't get it.
Good.
So I don't know if it has to be some special.
That would be my caution, because you don't want somebody calling you down here at five o'clock saying, uh, it won't start.
Yeah.
You know, so anyway, just.
Okay.
Be careful.
Yes, okay. Noted. Um, strategic planning update, I don't have anything new to discuss there. Um, so we found out this week that Deschutes Library has been mainly using Baker and Taylor as their book vendor. And Baker and Taylor announced that they are closing. And so, um, Deschutes had been getting ten boxes of new books a week and now they're getting maybe one. So, that has really affected us. It's affected us and Jefferson County because now we are the only ones with a copy in the system and fulfilling all of those holds. So we had a patron want the new John Grisham book. We put him on hold, he was number a hundred and fifty-nine in line. And we have one copy and Jefferson has one copy. So that's gonna take two years to get that book. Um, I don't know, I contacted Deschutes and asked them, you know, how we could help, what solution we could come to, because our patrons are our main priority and I want to be fair to our patrons. Um, I have not heard back yet. So with Deschutes, they are able, they've got buckets of money and they're able to order multiple copies of a book. Like six plus, whereas we, we don't have that budget. So we are only ordering maybe, we order one, maybe two to get a hot title. And that just stays here in the library. So, um.
There's no problem with our book vendor?
Nope, because we quit Baker and Taylor.
Please orders through us, give us the money, we'll order the books and get into them.
Well, yeah, that's an idea. So. Yeah, the.
They have the money, we have the books.
Yeah, so Baker and Taylor, we quit using them about nine months ago because we weren't getting our books. And we knew something was going on. We'd read Reddit, we'd check all these library forums and I'm not sure why Deschutes didn't do that. Um, so we've been using Ingram for our main vendor now and we also order books from Amazon.
Is a vendor like a lower cost?
Yeah, can they buy from Amazon?
They can. Because they were from Baker and Taylor, they were getting books that were shelf-ready. So they'd be processed, they'd have the label on them, barcode, RFID tag, they were ready just to hit the shelves.
So there's everything, they're not willing to make this exception during this time?
I watched their Instagram post, that's how I knew about it. So they didn't even let us know that this was going on. Um, but I watched their Instagram and it didn't say that they were looking, I mean, they're trying to get set up somewhere. But um, with the demand as it is right now, um, they haven't gotten anything right at the moment. So, I'm not sure. I did send out an email to see what, you know, what their timeline was, if they had a new vendor, if they were set up with Ingram. Why can't they order from Amazon, um, and process their own books?
Do you have the capability of getting the shelves ready?
We do, but it costs more.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. We totally could do that, but we have staff in-house that does that for us and um, it is less of a cost for us to do it, even purchasing the, the supplies needed to process the books. So.
Give them a little bit at state level, but kick up, kicking a few bucks or help you out somehow?
Well, the state's suffering right now too, with the government
Yeah.
cutting off funds. Um, I, I have not contacted them yet to see, you know, and I'm su- we aren't the, Deschutes isn't the only library having this problem. There was a lot of people. There was.
National Association, kicking a few bucks or anything?
I don't know. Um, I don't know.
Well, my guess is they'll have the problem solved quickly if they're looking at other vendors and they have money and they know their options.
We would hope so.
Is there pressure we need to put on them just to make them aware of the impact on rural counties?
Yeah, and I, um, in my email, I did stress that. You know, and that we can't purchase, we don't have the ability to purchase multiple copies of a book. Um.
And the hold line is the same line. So if they got twenty copies, then the whole one.
Yeah, yes. Yep, mm-hmm. And the majority of these holds are Deschutes patrons. So, the question is, you know, do we fulfill our patrons' holds first? And then start going down the line with Deschutes? Um, it doesn't really talk about that in our contract with Deschutes. We've read it over.
With someone if they're still in take.
Yeah.
Take moment.
Yeah.
They do a lot of give. And so I would say we shouldn't try to like undercut them in any way.
No, no, and I. Yeah, yeah, and I totally sympathize with their situation. Um, because.
We'll give you that credit.
Yeah. Wait, we weren't, we just weren't getting books and we actually started going with Ingram three years ago because Baker and Taylor got hacked. They got hacked and they immediately, their whole site went down, we couldn't order books and that was our only vendor. So we were stuck. And that's when we set up an account with Ingram. That took a while, it gets a while to set up all that electronic stuff. Um, but we finally did and we've been using them mostly for the most part. And they have local, um, a local warehouse in Roseburg. So we were getting our stuff in two days versus seven with Baker and Taylor.
Man, what do you guys think about like doing an email from the board or a letter from the board to someone that matters? I think it would be, it would be really helpful, I think, to include some really like key, specific data points, like the one you mentioned, like hold on a specific.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah.
But just one book is not a big deal, if that's ten books, twenty, but like whatever numbers you have.
Yeah.
And then kind of directing a letter to, uh, or email to their director and copying whoever they report to and in our, in our county, that would of course be the commissioner.
Right.
Um, and just saying the impact and please solve this, we love to have some creative suggestions, we want to see our hardship.
Yeah, and I do sympathize with them, I feel for them because Baker and Taylor put us, but we need. Yeah, we need to come up with a solution. Yeah.
Yes.
I wrote down, um, I wrote down about contacting them, either the board chair or the librarian, um, to discuss the situation and find out what their plans are. And letting them know that we're, we're here to help them in anything that they need. You know, if they need help with anything. Ordering books, you know, connections with, um, different vendors, things like that. Um, because I think it would be, from my perspective, I think it would be important to see if they've got a plan. If they don't have a plan, they have no idea what, uh, we don't, we have no idea. We're, you know, we're, then, then we could help step in and say, you know, we, this is what we've done. And these are the things that, you know, you might be, might be helpful to you.
Yeah, you know, be their support friends if they don't have a plan, but I definitely.
Yeah, you would think that in a situation like this, this would be a five priority.
Yes.
You know, they get books, I mean, so.
Yeah, I emailed yesterday and I, I haven't heard back yet, so.
So do you want to also drive something from the board? You know, we're all supportive of pressing them to do something, but.
Well.
Do you want to call them?
I, I, I was thinking about doing, yes. You know, about calling and seeing if I can get a conversation with them.
We'll just let us know if you need more weight or group support.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Because it, you know, I mean, like you said, they, they do something for us. Now, we get lost in them.
Yeah.
And Kim, if we hit a brick wall with this money thing, with the GoFundMe and, uh, site, help you out, um, goal is on our own, we have no other option to get books for us, I mean, you know, do what you gotta do.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, we have money in the budget for this year for our books, so that's not a problem, but we will always take donations. We'll always take donations. Yeah.
Scale one to ten, how bad is this right now?
Our money?
Yeah, I mean, you okay for a while?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we crunched the numbers in, um, June and yeah, we shifted stuff around and we made it work for this year, so. Yeah, we're set.
Do you see this being resolved by the end of the year or one more calendar year or whatever this?
The books or?
The books and get money for them, you know, instead of one copy, get three copies or whatever.
Oh, um, normally we don't, we don't have, first of all, we don't have money, but we don't have the shelf space for all of those copies either. Um, we do do the hot title copy, um, and then once this, we, I keep them on the shelf for about six months, the hot titles. If they're still circling, we'll keep them longer, but then that copy doesn't stay on the shelf, it is donated to the Friends of the Library. So, um, I just don't see us ever purchasing that many books. Um, but you know, if we could come to an agreement with Deschutes, if, you know, they gave us the money, we'd order the books or we could process their books or something like that, we could come up with a solution.
The problem, uh, problem, it looks like you have one copy of a book and you got a hundred people waiting or, I mean, is that really getting pretty bad or?
Well, it is right now, but, um, normally, no. No, normally Deschutes has, um, because they have a ratio. I don't remember what it was, um, but they will order multiple copies of them. And that usually isn't a problem. I mean, we've seen books that have the hundred holds on them. But, um, it goes really fast when there's a lot of copies in the system. So you have a hundred holds, but you have twelve copies in the system or twenty copies or whatever, it goes pretty fast. Yeah.
Have you seen the change or, uh, impact of that being for Google?
Um, well, that's why we cut it down to the four. Um, and right, the, I just paid the bill for October and it was twelve hundred dollars. Um, so, I mean, we're, it's good right now. It's good. And we've budgeted for that for this year, but we might need to rethink that for next year.
Yeah.
Because the digital copies are just so expensive. And we're not the only library that feels that. All libraries, a digital copy of a book is just so expensive. So.
And all those printing costs.
Oh, yes. So I don't have, um, the Friends of the Library report, they didn't have it ready yet um, for their meeting last month. Trying to think, they're gonna set up, um, a table in the library and right in front of the doors there at the self-check stations, like they did last year, and have their Christmas items. They're gonna have a display table there and they decorate it and they make a lot of money during December. So that'll be the, I think it'll be the week after Thanksgiving, they're gonna set that up. So look for that. Um, and they, they keep back special books that they get throughout the year. And they even sell puzzles and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Kind of.
Journals.
Journals, yeah. Yeah, stuff like that, yeah. Um, so yeah, makes them a lot of money. Yes, and I never, I was on vacation, so I didn't hear anybody here how.
That it went well.
It went well.
I have a base and I don't know dollar-wise, but I thought they said they went through forty boxes of books.
Great.
But I don't know dollar-wise what that equated to, but I believe they said they went through forty boxes.
That's fantastic.
Just pretty good.
Yes, because once they're done with their sales, they've got all those books left. And those books, then they distribute throughout Central Oregon to, um, Habitat for Humanity, someone in Sisters, there's two people in Redmond they distribute to, um, and then, was it Neat Repeat here? Was that one of them?
I think maybe.
Maybe.
I think so.
Or St. Vincent. Some of those, but then, so they're not even done after the sale. Then they, all the volunteers get together and decide who's gonna go where to deliver all of these books, so it's a big job, but, yeah.
So, I'll talk to you about the interviews first and then I'll talk to you about the county commission.
Okay.
Um, yesterday, the interview, we did two, they were both on, um, Zoom. Okay, um, when the meeting was over, I asked Will, what can I say? And he said basically not. Um, essentially what I can tell you is that the, um, that meeting yesterday went well, it really did. Um, and that the, the process is ongoing. I got an email today from Amy over there and it says, as you know, the second round interviews to the library director at Penns were, uh, held yesterday. Both App Pents will move to the third round interviews, which will consist of individual interviews with the commissioners and county manager. Yes, you would like to participate in the final round of interviews, you are welcome to do so. You will need to be, have availability December fourth and the eighth from two to four. Okay, any after. If you have, if you are available on these dates and would like to participate, please let her know, and that's Amy Albert over at the county. And, and she attached the resumes, redacted resumes. Um, the, the, the interviews were not long. Scheduled for now, the first one lasts an hour, the second one lasted forty minutes. Um, both, at the end of the meeting, I told the, the three county people, I said, you guys are gonna have a tough decision, right? They both interviewed very well. Um, it, it, you know, they, they said all the right things. They mentioned about the, the um, company closing.
Oh, Baker and Taylor.
Yeah, it did. They mentioned that, that there was, you know, one remaining. So they're, they're aware of what is going on in the library world, if you will. Um, neither candidate is currently working at a library. Um, both of them's in education at this point. Um, that's pretty much what I can tell you. If you have questions, ask and I'll tell you if I can tell you or not. So. No, it, it went well. It, it did, and I was very happy that went. They had, they had fourteen questions. We each took turns asking the questions. Um, one of the questions. Yeah, 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 what, you know, I thought the same thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. What, you know, I thought the same thing, but about, you know, you know, twenty minutes into it, it was like. We're actually gonna get through it. One of the questions that I thought was a great question was, what is your favorite book? And my, you know, I, I think about what would I, how would I answer that? And it's like, I would have to answer it the way one of the candidates did, which is my favorite book is a kid who's this and my favorite book is an adult is this. Because, you know, I remember the very first book I took out in the library, which was uh, Harold and the Purple Crayon. But my favorite book is Mark Rives or Slimy. It's a human book. It's out of print. Um, but it was interesting because, you know, you kind of have to think about, you guys think about, what is your favorite book? And the one person said, um, Tiki Tiki Timbo, No Serimbo, is that how you said it? Yeah, okay. And I thought that was cute.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I was like, okay, cool. Cause one of the first books she ever read. So, hey, like I said, it was, it was, I thought it was really good. Um, they asked me to do a, um, they had a grading system that you go through for each, you know, area that they, they had. Um, and I graded them and turned it in today. Um, I don't know, I don't know what the process is going to be for selecting the director. I haven't like, never asked.
Were you at the interview, Mark? Oh, were, you weren't there too?
No, he, he was going to, but he, he wasn't there.
Just wait, you're your kid too.
Like I said, this, I thought it was productive, you know, it'd be hard to choose between the two. As far as the county commissioners meeting on the fourteenth of October, it was regarding library services and health services. Those are the two areas of discussion. I told Kim that I thought it was very interesting when they, they talked about health systems first. And I thought it was very interesting when they were going through, um, what the county does as far as health services, had no idea.
They do a lot.
What they did. And I didn't really focus on it or anything. It's just a matter of, when they were talking about it, a lot of it is outreach, outreach to the outer, outer part of the uh, county.
Outer galaxy?
Yeah, that, yeah, so. Um, county manager Will and the acting library director Kim led the discussion on library services. And I had notes, they talked about the bookmobile. The update costs and the size and, and all of that. The, oh, that was something that came up, was the mobility of the vehicle. Because it's so large. They talked about hoopla, it's discussed about the value of this tool. Its usefulness and how it acts as an outreach to the community and beyond. And the size of the selection was also discussed. One of the things they did talk about as far as outreach was uh, partnering with the job bear during this last year. Um, Kim informed the group, the statistics that the, for use by the community and the group programs throughout the year. They talked about the Juniper Canyon project. Um, Will recommended tagging the project for a library in Juniper Canyon. And, and when I say that, library slash community uh, center. And Commissioner, is it Hermrich?
Hermrich.
Yeah, Hermrich, uh, discussed the project as not as a library, but a community center. Oh, and one of the things they came up with, especially with the general painting project was just what do, what does the community want? What are the people in the community want? And that was a big thing. And I'm not sure, Kim, maybe you can help me with this, but I'm not sure who he was putting the onus on. Whether it was the library, whether it was the county.
Who he was what?
Um, putting the onus on, you know, who's, who's gonna be responsible for finding out what the people want.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, I know, and they'll listen to it.
So it was, um, Commissioner Crawford that said that he wanted to ask the Juniper Canyon people what they wanted up there. Hold it.
It was at the church. I was there.
Yeah. Um, they talked about outreach services. There's a discussion on the use of the facility here in Bryanville, which ties into this meeting in place. Um, suggested charging fees to groups using the library facility. Um, more so for commercial use. Now, now correct me if I'm wrong, Kim.
That's right.
More so commercial than for community use.
So, um, we do charge right now for commercial use.
Like selling stuff?
Yes, if they're taking money, if money is exchanging hands at all.
My issue with that, okay, you have figured it out yet, okay? I have issues with, um, I, I tend to be a conspiracy theorist, admit that. My issue is, is collecting those fees, I want them to stay here.
They would.
I'm going to the community fund.
They wouldn't.
Want them to stay with whatever the use of.
Well, what it would be for is to help upkeep this room.
Okay.
We have had to throw away how many tables?
We're down almost, I'd say seven tables.
And this one's broken right back here.
No, just in general, we used to have twenty tables and we're down to about thirteen now. So we advertise this room as being usable for.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty. Oh, I don't recommend that, but um, we don't have the tables for that.
And we've had to throw away chairs. The floor needs redone. We need a new sound system.
Yes.
Um, and we don't have the money in the budget to do that.
Yeah.
This room gets heavy, heavy use and it's mostly for birthday parties, baby showers.
Exercise class.
Exercise class, yeah. Um, and it gets used hard.
I was giving this some thought, cause this kid I did the baby shower for in this room was simply, is in his first year of college.
Oh, wow.
So it's been a long time ago, but I had to hand them a hundred dollar check at the desk and they held that until this room was put back together and cleaned up. And then the check was handed back to me. So are you still doing that?
No. No, we are only charging for commercial use.
Oh, okay, because if I was doing a birthday party in here and I had to put down a hefty deposit, I'm not gonna let the little bird rats tear up the table.
Yeah.
Chairs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it just not possible?
How much grocery do you take in every year for that, uh, usually this room? Ballpark.
Uh, we, two hundred and fifty dollars, maybe?
Oh, oh, a little more than that, but that money, that doesn't go back into our budget, does it? It does.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it doesn't go into the meeting or budget. Um, but, um, I would assume it's probably around rough ballpark, a hundred dollars a month. Right now, maximum a hundred dollars a month. There's not a lot of commercial use of this.
I was just looking at Parks and Rec's fees for comparison. Their gazebo is forty in district, seventy out for a half day, four hour rental for pretty much any of the parks, which includes a pavilion and picnic tables. And then a full day is seventy, one twenty-two.
Mm-hmm. We charge twenty dollars an hour for the commercial use.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's what most, a lot of people are doing for birthday parties. I guess this is the alternative that's cheaper.
Free. Free. But we, we do think that that would maybe make people stop and think about taking care of the room a little better.
I think forty dollars is pretty small for a giant party.
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
The thing is, though, I'm sorry, I'm just, is a new table forty dollars? Like, what's the forty dollars actually gonna cover? If somebody brought a table, they should replace the table, like.
If someone damages the room, they do have to pay for the damage at this time, but it.
But we're not, we don't know who it is. We have multiple parties. We have multiple parties on the weekends or in after hours, there's no way to know.
But if you charge forty dollars a paper, you're here. Of course, there's probably shorter rental term, like people just, like you do multiple things a day, not just like half days.
Right.
So you got like an hourly rate.
Yeah, so we have a, we. We have a half hour rate for the commercials, it's ten dollars, yeah. Um, I forgot what I was just gonna say. Oh, and it wouldn't be for a nonprofit. Yeah.
No.
I mean, it makes a lot of sense to do something in district and out of district as well, since all of this is paid by, paid for by some funds. And to people from outside that are using it, that's extra crazy, right?
That's actually not true. Parks and Rec, if you live out of, I mean, we are not in district for Parks and Rec. Our tax money doesn't fund Parks and Rec. I'm saying that for the library, the people that use the library that don't live in county. So you're saying out of Crook County?
Yeah, because there was not a district for paying for the library. Yep, so I don't, I, I, that's how we base library codes as well.
Yep, mm-hmm. Yeah, if you live in the county, you pay your property taxes, your card is free. If you live in Deschutes or Jefferson, you pay.
Is there an easy way in place to verify that other than do you have a library card?
No.
Is this, is this used to its maximum availability or is it sits empty for quite a while?
It never sits empty.
It'd be super fun to do a break that's for cardholders and non-cardholder.
That's a, damn, that's a good idea.
Out of district, but you paid for a card, you should get the in district price.
Yeah.
There's also, I think, consideration about, um, birthday parties versus like, I've used this space for nonprofits.
Yeah, and we wouldn't charge nonprofits. We wouldn't charge nonprofit groups. You'd provide your 501(c) and.
Nonprofit and you'd have business and you'd have.
Public, community, yeah. So we wouldn't charge for nonprofit groups. And it'd just be the commercial and the.
Is this all decided?
No. No, no, this isn't, wasn't, no.
I have no sense of like, the vicinity, all of that conversation.
Yeah, for that, it was just, it pretty much was just going through and discussing what, you know, the, the different areas that the, you know, that the library covers. Do you remember them talking, they didn't, oh, is that the, was that the meeting that they said that the library got an extra three cents per thousand? Yeah, I don't think that was that meeting. No, that wasn't the budget meeting.
No, that was during a, um, department head meeting.
Yeah, this was just basically going over what the services that both the health services and library services go through. And I think it was more of informational for the county commissioners.
Yeah.
You know, to know what.
We haven't decided anything.
Yeah.
This is just a discussion. Um, because we are losing so many.
Some of those.
We, it's up to us, yes. But then we present it to the commissioners and they have to approve it.
And one of the, one of the things from the meeting that I got was that it, if, if you listen to the meeting, it was more of the county and the county commissioners' view of what the library is and what they expect, you know, from it. Um, and.
And that maybe they don't expect to serve the entire county?
My personal opinion? Yes, that, that's essentially where it comes down. Yeah, that, that's, there, I edited my comments because when I wrote them to Kim and I gave them to her, she was on vacation. I came back a week later when she got back and I said, yeah, I was gonna write it up and give them to you, but there were comments in here again with my own little take on it. And I just, I actively kept thinking about it. I thought better of it and, you know, it's not that it was wrong, but it was very opinionated and very my opinion. And mine doesn't always, you know, I mean, I, yeah, I spend too much time on social media.
Yeah, it sounds like you have some feelings about this space not being free. And I may even should not. I feel like a, a voice that I don't have the perspective of at all are the people who are using this free birthday space, like the families that really can't afford the forty dollar rent block park. I mean, I know there are options, cause I've been to birthday parties at parks where they didn't bring anything and they're like, we don't have anything. We're just meeting here and we sit in the grass and so free places to go.
Yeah, the Friends of the Library, um, because it was brought up at their, their meeting, um, I wanted to get some thoughts from them too. They said that they would put up a five hundred dollar gift. Scholarship, that's, yeah, scholarship. So if a family came and, you know, they really couldn't afford it, then they would pay for them to use the room.
They have them saying I can't afford it, no proof or.
No proof. No, no proof. We wouldn't require
Awesome.
Any of that. So that was very generous of them to do that.
Probably a lot, a lot of people in groups who use this space don't understand why it's free. I know that's always been my perspective, like why is this free?
Yeah. Yeah.
My kids didn't get parties every year, so if I was gonna do a party, I was gonna go big. And forty bucks for a room would not have been a big deal on top of the groceries and decorations and all the other things.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe babies, so.
I'm gonna have to talk to them.
As long as she's young, she's like totally fine.
I, I will talk to them.
My oops, you don't have birthday.
Half birthday is the week, so she only gets a half birthday every four years.
I do just, I, I wanna go back to Juniper Canyon because whatever wonderful qualities or whatever about Sarah, she was really, really, really making that effort. I mean, part of that bookmobile was getting out into the county. Part of that library up there was getting out, like, we need to serve more than Bryanville, so I don't wanna see us lose sight of that. I know there's staffing issues.
Well, we still are serving them. We just go in the van. So we're, we're still going out there. Brenda went out to Palina today.
But they'll sit in a way where I have to ask you for something and then you bring it to me?
We don't do that, no.
Bookmobile is just stacked. I can just Thursday at three pop out there or whatever the schedule is and then.
Yeah, what does the van take to Palina? That's not request.
They go, she does, um, programming. She does programming. So we don't, we don't go and just sit with it. No, um, but when we would take the bookmobile out, it was rarely used. Like, no one would come. Ochka West, Palbut, Palina. Um, Juniper Canyon was the only one where she'd get people and most of the time they wouldn't get the books, they'd get the free stuff. It wasn't being used for what it was designed for, to check out books. It was being.
So when you say programming, what do you mean?
She does, um, a storytime and a craft.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, she goes to Brothers and Palina and, um, then everywhere here in town. Schools, preschools, grade schools. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
To cancel the December meeting like we did last year, you know, the party is complex, travel. I was gonna bring cookies, but. Um, last year we all realized that we weren't like, candidates weren't gonna be able to make it. Uh, my schedule's not confirmed, but I think they do have a conflict. Um, so I was just gonna throw that out there, but last year we did.
Kim, you see the big bus thingy out there being put to good use in the future?
I don't think so. So.
It's too big.
Seriously, why don't we just sell it and take the bucks and put it in, you know, and buy more books or I'm sure there's other ways to use that money. I don't know what you could get for it, but ask the guys over at Bus Garage to go through that thing, make it look good and, I don't know, sell some hippie and give them.
Looks like it'd make a great prison transport. Sorry, that's what it looks like.
No, I know.
Getting back to your comment. I have solved for that, as long as it, is, is it, uh, fits within, you know, rules and regulations, okay?
No, we can do that.
Find out that we can't have, we can't skip a meeting.
You can.
Okay, all right, then I can't second, but I, I agree with you, so. To.
You're not getting back to the bus.
Getting back to the bus. There's a motion or any tape. We need a second before it's gonna die.
All second.
Okay, now we can have a discussion about the meeting. Is there any reason?
He wants to be here with her cookies, which sounds wonderful.
I, wait, I don't have a preference where we're gonna.
Songs like.
Is there anything, uh, serious, serious, is there anything coming up? That we would miss out addressing if we go ahead and blew off this December meeting? Good question. Nothing, so no big deal? Okay, so the meeting would be the eleventh of December if we were to have it. So.
We'll make in January and I'll bring. Compromise.
Yeah, New Year's party.
And pants optional, but if that's like the thing that.
Real pants versus yoga.
It would be yesterday, there's a time everyone wore pants in like nine months. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. For canceling next, not having next meeting December eleventh. On favor. I, okay, any opposed? Okay, then it says we're not having a meeting next month. Unless somebody finds out we have.
We do not. We are allowed to skip.
Wouldn't he have major decorations and we have to go to him and sell that bus event?
I don't know if we can sell it. Because. I don't know if, because it's county owned, I don't know if we can do that, like ethically.
You would have to probably go to the county commissioners and make a suggestion.
Yeah.
That it be sold.
Yeah.
And that the funds go into the library.
Yeah.
I, I, I'll harp on that until the day, and I don't want the, I don't want money that we generate from the library. To have to go into the general fund. I know they do, but I don't. You know, I wanna try and keep as much as we can so that we can buy tape.
Yes, that.
Buy chips.
Yes.
You know.
The meeting room money would go strictly for the meeting room upkeep.
Kim, how much money have we got sunk into that thing right now, ballpark?
Just this past year, probably twenty thousand.
Okay.
We, we had given it to Wheeler County. Several years ago, um, and they ended up not using it. And so they gave it back to the county, and it went up there by the airport and just sat. And so to get it running, it costs around twenty thousand dollars.
Well, there's no sense setting that thing, that thing sitting there and rotting, because that's gonna kill them, the engine.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something we should start, you know, exploring like, or you should, right now.
Yeah.
Get rid of that thing.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's, it's your, your fault. If you don't see this being viable, bye.
Yeah.
I would hate, I would hasten to say at this point, I know, at this point, this day, Kim, it, it would be Kim's decision, but I. Just for your own, own. I would, I would wait until the director gets here. Let them deal with it.
Yeah.
Um, because, yeah, they don't want, I, I don't want you, what, I don't want your decisions to be questioned by the new person.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be my only thing. I've seen it before, Mark, and it's totally kicking, you know, did you do that? You know. Well, once the county starts fixing up, they might wanna get the claws into some money back from fixing it up for us, um, I don't know.
Yeah.
And next time they do, next time they give it to another county, you have to stipulate, no bashes.
No take backs. Well, we don't wanna back.
What can you tell us about financials?
Well, here they are.
Does, is there anything you scan out?
No, nope. Everything looks good, we're on track. So. Proposal for the statue, is that where we're at? This statue right here.
Where's that gonna go?
Well. He, yeah, he put in a proposal here. The guy's name is Gary Thomas, and he, um, he has been trying to get us to put in a statue. Since I've been here, every director he goes through.
This specific statue or?
Yeah. It's been a no. But. What he wants to do is put it out here in the middle of that island, where there's already a statue. He suggests moving that statue. He suggests moving it to the back of the library. And having this one. He wants it, you know, life size, it's on the, yeah.
If he wants to be commissioned?
He says that he is gonna try to, um.
Number seven.
Yeah, uh, from, from private donors and donations. Where did he say it, um?
Like he has a.
Yeah, so he's trying to limit the amount that it would cost the library. He's hoping that it wouldn't cost us anything, but you don't know, if he doesn't raise that money, then does that fall to us to have to pay for? My main thing is we already have a statue there. And, yeah, I didn't. Yes, a man in, um, Sisters. Or Bend. Sculpted that for us. Um, several years ago, and it was put there.
Like it was purchased?
It was a, it was a donation. He donated it. Um, and that was. I don't know who, who was the director at that time, April maybe?
I believe it was April.
Um, my thing is, it, every director it's been through, it's been a no. We already have a statue out there, um. So I just, um, said that I would propose this to you. He's on a cruise right now, so he couldn't be here. But he did draft this up.
It's life size, do you know, having like three full-sized people, that's how big it is?
Life size.
I guess it's seated first, it'd be a little bigger than the size of that table I would be in.
And he wants to, to.
Do you all wanna go and sit like that? He thinks we're rather small, so we could.
You are.
Here, just get a little closer.
Keep coming.
Read it again. That's fair, can I even imagine, yeah.
Well, just my little comment. If there was anything. Any little bit that would. End up costing the library any money, I would be a no.
And you don't know, once you get into it, he doesn't have donors in mind, or any, you know, set. To put this money forth, um. Yeah, so that, I mean, that was, that was my thing, I don't want. He said he'd seek funding for this sculpture in an effort to keep any of the funds from being taken directly out of the library budget.
Bestly, fans, man, nice, off and go ride. Okay, the other part is, from my perspective, Sandy, my perspective is, is it needed? And I don't think it is. I, I mean, it's a wonderful, I, I think it's a wonderful sculpture. But I'm not sure it's needed.
Right.
You know.
Talk to Odot when they do the next one about, surely we're gonna get more roundabouts, right?
Yeah, I would, I think one on Peters there in Maine, we're supposed to get one.
You know, I just was assuming.
They are.
But.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
It would be a nice little thing to put in case, so look at, but not.
Yeah, when we already have something out there and. The funds aren't collected, like he doesn't have the funds, and I don't know how much it would cost.
And if proposing it multiple times and still not having the funds, just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kim, you wanna put something really cool out there, it's not gonna take up much space, ser- seriously?
What?
Talk to the kids at the art class over at school, have them submit some kind of a drawing on a wall out here.
Oh, mural.
That would, you, you know, that would get those kids interested in the library, maybe draw some more of them in. You know, hey, here's a picture of, you know, mice and men or whatever. We've talked to them, it takes up zero, shut up. You're a weird person. No, ser- seriously.
Yeah.
Might be kinda neat.
Yeah.
Could be the project for, um. Eagle Scout too. Yeah, there you go. Four A's Eagles, get all those kids together. Yeah.
So it sounds like at this point, we can tell him that he's at the top of the list to talk to him the next time we need a ginormous sculpture.
I think that's a good way to.
Yeah, that's a good way to say it, mm-hmm.
It's not no, but not right now. Does he do paintings too? Or is this sculpture?
I think he just does sculptures.
He might know somebody who, you know, pick cans, spray paint and. They do something out there, yeah, let's go there.
Yeah, I don't know about that. It looks a little different, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, can we go on? We don't have any continuing business, right? No, okay, new business. New business.
Oh, we already did all that.
No, we didn't.
Not enough?
Not enough, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I, I like the idea of the twenty dollar an hour, but I think there should be a base fee. Okay? Um, because. Because of the goods, because of the wear and tear and everything like that. Um, I don't think eighty dollars for a half a day is enough.
Are you questioning my question? Are you talking in a cross the board for everybody?
No, 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 I, I'll stick with the corporate.
Oh, okay.
Oh, commercial.
Don't be screwed, that much of a screw.
Okay, I just.
But my original line of view was a minimum of a few, um, a hundred dollar base and twenty dollars an hour after that.
The businesses are coming in here selling stuff. I doubt they're like.
Paint parties, who else uses it?
Uh, rarely will have, uh, groups come in and do kind of a little sale with different tables or booths in the room. Um, other than that, we, we don't have a lot of commercial use, and that's why we're only seeing maybe a hundred dollars a month.
So the paint party, they charge one dollars a person, and it's mostly supplies, when you come in.
What paint parties are you going to?
That's what, I mean, I've hired someone to come to our hospital and do one of these, that's what they charge.
Parties my wife went to were fifty bucks.
Yeah, they're a little more expensive.
Thirty bucks was the one.
Hire someone. She charged us a hundred bucks for some people.
Wow.
And maybe because it was the hospital.
Yeah, it could be, yeah. But, yeah, the paint party, my wife went to, fifty bucks a pop. And.
Very expensive.
You know, so they could afford a hundred dollars.
Is that what these are, these really expensive?
Thirty a person.
It doesn't sound like we're doing that anymore, yeah, looks kinda like a moot point.
Yeah, but.
Surely the person.
Corporate may be a strong word.
I, I live in the world of finance, so the R T, R T stuff is, you know, I, I'm, yeah, alright.
But then, so would you charge the same for a, a birthday party or a baby?
I'll retract, I say, because it doesn't, I don't wanna give it enough. I just, I'm. Again, when I look, you know, my, my brain filters finance, my brain filters money. And it was just when you guys were talking about that, twenty bucks an hour just didn't seem like enough to me.
But I don't think twenty dollars for a commercial is, isn't enough.
I agree. But, you know, if you're trying to throw a birthday party for a children's party, and, you know, and you have a paint, paint party for children. And, you know, forty bucks for a cou- for a couple hours.
But there wouldn't.
That might be difficult.
Hiring someone to come in is not the same as money exchanged here at the door.
Yeah, true, true, true.
That's it, right?
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is, is I agree with you is that, you know, coming up with the food. You know, the entertainment or whatever you're gonna have for a child's birthday party, and then on top of that, you're adding a hundred bucks. Uh, you know.
So, okay, so going, if you're. Most of your damage is from birthday parties, so am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, big parties, graduations, baby showers.
Okay. Why, why not do it like they used to do it? I mean, you've gotta put down a hefty deposit. And you're not gonna get it back if that room is damaged, and make sure you have. A staff member come in and look at that room. That's what they did way back when.
It's less about the damage and more about just the general wear and tear, and the fact that this room is getting old. This room has been used heavily for over twenty years.
Yeah.
The tables, the chairs, um, the electronics. Uh, we need, we need to upgrade, we need to replace things, and it's more about how do we raise the funds for that.
Okay.
To make this room better for everyone in the community. Um, yeah.
If I may also say something on that, I think. You're a hundred percent correct on that, I agree with that, um. But I think another part of it is. Because we're open, like, say on a Sunday, you can book the room for a birthday party on a Sunday when the library is closed. So they could put a deposit down, say on a Friday. But then we don't have any staff members here to come and check that room. And then if we have, you know, maybe they have a, a morning brunch with friends, and then there's a birthday party in the afternoon. Who's to say who did the damage? You know, and then we just kinda get into a really sticky situation with that. So I feel like that is an option, that is something we could do. But we would have to really change everything and how we are able to book the room so that we could make that a possibility.
Okay, why, um. Why even book this room when the library's closed? That has never made any sense to me at all.
Yeah.
A lot of people use it very responsibly. Well, I, no, but I'm not even talking about the damage issue or anything. That'd be like me wanting to do my birthday party in McDonald's Play Yard after they're closed.
I mean, I think the answer is because there's not a lot of community spaces in this town, and so it's, it's happening because it's simply available. And if you made it unavailable, there would just be even less options.
Well, that's, that's true, but I mean, you, you've gotta, we have to figure out how to keep this room upgraded. And as you were saying. I just. For the life of me, I just don't understand it. Opening the room unsupervised when we're closed, so that's just me.
I think respect to like access, like if you raise the price on a commercial, who do you price out of that access, accessing now? Like, there is a number where the paint parties would absolutely stop. The vendors with their small booths would stop. What's that number? There's a number with which the birthday parties would stop. Are we trying to stop access, or people are using it so much, it doesn't appear that that's the case? Um, is this an asset to the community that's worth preserving? And if it's worth preserving, then we shouldn't be trying to price people out of using it. Or changing the hours.
Well, that, that's true.
The only thing is.
We don't wanna price them out of using it, but we wanna. Preserve the room and keep it upgraded.
Sounds to me, Sandy, like, like what, what you're talking about is having. A custodian, and I'm not talking about somebody to sweep the floors, I'm talking about somebody that would be. Responsible for making sure the room is, you know, that they're being used properly and everything. Cause my question would be similar to yours. Who's to say, you get somebody come in here that wants to have a party, and they, you know. It turns into something else, nefarious. Okay, and there's nobody here to, here to monitor. There's nobody here to call cops. You know, that kinda thing, you know, windows could be broken, you know, cabinets could be broken. The screen could be, you know, just.
It gets everhappens, but.
But it could. Okay, it, it, the thing is, is it, but. And that's, that's, you know, but I also understand that if you have somebody here. Now you're paying somebody.
Right.
You know, and, and that, you know, comes down to budget, the only way you can cover that is if you charge, you know, the twenty dollars an hour. The person coming can only make twenty dollars now. Cause at least it's covering that person being. That kinda thing. But I, I, I have the same concern.
We gotta pick the room, the tables, that doesn't work. We gotta pick the room and the tables, that doesn't work.
It's not a problem.
But any rental.
No, you gotta pay for.
I rent the Ochko gym where roller skating, our pills off, kids are falling and hurting themselves. They've got scooters and skateboards and. Shoes with wheels. But there's no supervision, but there is a fee, but.
Can you merit a request for use? When you guys aren't here? Okay, well, you know what they do in the medical field? Sunday, then put somebody in hot room and if they get called in, if the.
That's what I'm saying. I know, I don't.
She said, you know. This really, and there ain't a whole heck of a lot of other places to go in Frankville.
No, we don't wanna take the room away at all. Um.
No, if anything, that is, that was one of the discussions by having the place up in Juniper Canyon. Was that it wasn't, it wasn't the library, it was a.
A community spot.
Community room and that's the reason why.
Yeah.
This is because we do need more. You were talking about birthdays earlier, you know, well, what if somebody has a birthday late November and there's snow out? You're gonna go out, you know, outside in the picnic ground and, and have a picnic? No, you're gonna wanna have some indoors, you know, so, and, yes. It, it, I agree with you guys, I, I just wanted to float that idea because I didn't really understand the, the dynamics of it. But, you know, I mean. It, it, it seems reasonable what we're doing and it is a community service.
We don't wanna hinder anybody from using it.
No.
Because we are a library and, you know, we're here to help everybody. And not turn people away. Um. But again, we do have to upkeep the room. The, the tables and the chairs were purchased with a grant. Um, several years ago. Do you know how old the tables and chairs are?
It was before my, yeah, I would say at least.
I would put that on the list for the director.
Yeah.
You know, cause I, I honestly think you guys that work here, you guys should be starting a list.
Oh, there's a list.
Okay, good. Yeah, no, because those are the kinda things that.
Oh, there's a list.
Yeah, welcome to your job here and I do this. Yeah.
You just restate, like you have a proposal.
We don't have a proposal, it was just a discussion. Yep, just a discussion, nothing's being decided.
Took us, took us a while to get around that one, but yeah, that was doing it. Okay. So the next meeting has been canceled, that means the next meeting would be in January.
January, you got it?
January eight. It's the first, it's on Thursday.
Yep, January eighth.
January. So. And does anybody have anything else they wanna talk about? Nope, a motion agenda, I mean, an adjournment at, let's say, six thirty?
Six twenty-nine.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Six thirty.
We have to wait for four minutes.
Well, by the time we get the boat. By the way?
The penny going away.
Oh, yeah, I know, isn't that funny?
Costs four cents to make a penny, did anybody know that? I learned that fun fact today.
Okay, motion adjourned. We go, see?
I second again.
Okay, all in favor of I, we're adjourned. Yeah, I know, so.